Yeah, and I was like, oh, good. I said, well, I said, we'll see some people in the morning.
And I remember seeing him.
Ruby doesn't see him.
You're like, that's, you're, that's a rich.
I said, yeah.
That's a good one.
No, it's nice.
Chase was a working player.
Yeah.
And I said, I saw your old school's gonna be on schedule for a case day. And he's like, he's like, they're, he said, everybody talks about Indy State or S D S U.
Yeah.
He's like, they're good.
F C S was, yeah.
He's like, they can play.
Bring it.
Yeah, they were, they were pretty good. They did a lot of motion. Off guard.
It is one o'clock on September 2nd, 2025. This is a regularly scheduled city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Andrew's turn to do the pledge and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow?
Father, we come to this day, we are so grateful for the way that you are using our city to be a light father in this region. We are so thankful for all you are doing and the way that you are blessing us. Father, thank you for the continued success that we as a city are thriving. And we just lift up each and every one of the employees of the city. We ask that you guard and protect them. We thank you for our first responders, Father. We're so thankful that you are moving mildly for divine protection, Father, and just wisdom in each and everything that they do. Today, as a city commission, we ask for wisdom over this agenda. And Father, we are so grateful for the way in which you are taking care of us. We love you, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. They'll stand approved if there's any changes. I didn't see anything on this item, so they'll stand approved as presented. Item five on the agenda is public comment. This is a time where we set aside for anybody to come up and to visit with us about any item that's not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and when you do come forward, please state your name.
I guess I'm the first?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Have a good weekend. My name is Mike Walker. I've lived in Garden over 25 years. I retired from the city in October after 18 years. I'm here to address Tally Trail. I ride my bike 15 miles a day, and probably 10 miles of that is on Tally Trail. I did a little survey, unscientific survey, of probably around 250 people either through social media or in person, and there's a consensus that Tally Trail is in bad shape because where it's been repaired, there's now humps, and now there's dips, and there's humps about every 10 feet. It's like going down a something with, you know, speed bumps on it. I mean, people have said they stopped running down Tally Trail because of it. People have stopped pushing their, their scrollers down Tally Trail. And I know that there's a lot of talk about, well, we're going to expand, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I think we need to fix what we've got. I mean, it's just, the worst part of it is that we put an eighth street in campus. That's the worst part. It's just, now I kind of shy away from Tally Trail. I ride the zoo, I ride a lot of the other places. But I think we need to, you know, take a look at what it's going to take to fix that before we extend it out. And I do want to give a shout out to the traffic guys, which I used to be one, and thank them for aiding with all the bike lanes.
Yeah, looks great.
I appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I have. I just think this is something we need to, we need to look into because it's a, Tally Trail is a great thing. I mean, it is really good, but it needs to be fixed because, I mean, even people have talked about they don't even ride their bikes down there anymore because they tear their bikes up. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, would you be willing to share your, would you be willing to share your unscientific survey with, with staff for us to kind of see the results of what you came up with?
Okay. Yeah, let me see if I can pull it off of, because I pull off the internet and stuff like that. Yeah, I can do that. Um, there's something else, and I forgot. That's what happens when you get old. At least I have an excuse.
You can come back, Mike. You're just, it isn't one and done.
I think you could probably ask a gentleman about it, too. Because I saw him on Tally Trail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, it, you know, it's a nice thing. And let's, let's face it, let's be honest, it's dangerous riding a bicycle on the streets in Garden. I mean, it is. Because it's, yeah, the drivers we have are interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? All right, moving on to six A.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Lisa Knoll on behalf of Kansas Food Bank to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month in Garden City, Kansas.
I know Lisa's here. Do you want to say something before or after I read the proclamation? Okay.
You're good at speaking off the cuff.
Yeah.
Um, no, what I would point out is that one in eight individuals in western Kansas and the 31 most western Kansas counties, one in eight are food insecure and one in six children. So hunger is very rare, very real, and food insecurity is very real in western Kansas. Where we talk about feeding the world, we still have people that go hungry every day. So we would love it if you would proclaim this national hunger awareness we can, Garden City.
Okay, entertain a motion on this item.
So moved.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I'll sign the proclamation.
The proclamation reads, whereas hunger remains an urgent issue affecting over 5,300 individuals and families within our community, with one in seven Kansans and one in six Kansas children in Finney County being food insecure. And whereas addressing hunger and promoting food security is a vital priority that requires collective efforts from all sectors of society, by working collaboratively, we can make significant strides in reducing food insecurity and ensuring that our neighbors do not go hungry. And whereas September has been designated as Hunger Action Month by Feeding America, the nation's largest hunger relief organization, with 200-plus network partners across the United States. And whereas this month presents an opportune time to raise awareness about the persistent challenges faced by the experiencing hunger and to encourage individuals, organizations, and businesses alike to take action through volunteerism, participation in community events, monetary support, and beyond. And now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, hereby proclaim September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in Garden City and encourage all citizens to support the Kansas Food Bank and its 700 partners, providing enough food for over 15 million meals to our food insecure neighbors in Garden City and across 85 Kansas counties. Signed and sealed the second day of September 2025, Roy Cessna, Mayor.
You want to come up and we'll get a picture with, with you? And I see there's some others in the, in the audience that, yes.
When they volunteer, they're not this shy. They're not this shy.
It's good.
I've got two cameras.
All right. Two cameras.
Two and three.
There's one.
One.
That's fine.
The mother one.
Two and three. Okay.
All right. On to item seven.
Item seven, a short report of the city manager. We have the zoo's monthly report. And if you've got, and also then the lineup change from Cox Communications they're required to do as part of their franchise agreement with the city. Any questions or comments over there, those?
Some exciting transfers into the zoo.
Mm-hmm.
Our newest community members.
Yeah.
Item eight, meetings of note. Those requiring R S V Ps, please do those through the city clerk's office. And I think we're ready for nine A, appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2594-2025A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2594-2025A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
The next item has a public hearing start time. We're not there yet, so if we want to go on to 10B. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the attached resolution allowing Garden City to participate in the Kansas Moderate Income Housing Grant Program for the Petra Residences Garden City Project on behalf of Petra Investments Partners LLC. If approved, this would be resolution number 3208-2025.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The Kansas Moderate Income Housing Program allows cities incorporated in Kansas with a population of fewer than 60,000 people to request grants or loans for infrastructure and/or housing development in rural areas. Grants or loans under the program will be limited to no more than $650,000 per awardee. Additionally, the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Program allows for housing projects within counties of a population of fewer than 75,000 people to apply for tax credits under this program. The communities must have a need for housing. As demonstrated in the most recent Housing Assessment Team or Chat Report, there remains a need for housing in Garden City and Finney County. Government agencies have to apply for these grants on behalf of the developers, and a resolution of support is required by the governing body, giving the city the authority to apply for and participate in the program. There's one project, Petra Residences, the Garden City Project. For the first round of funding in 2025, that project and property is generally located along Jenny Barker, north of Highway 156, and the developer is asking for both M I H grant and K H I T C to use for the development costs for construction of approximately 40 units, including both one and two-bedroom units. It's anticipated that there'll be 40 of each type of those units. And in the map that's attached, that's building A and B, so this is on a much larger site, multi-phase project, but this is just related to those two buildings that you see in the attached map. The alternatives before you are, one, the governing body may approve the resolution supporting the M I H and K H I T C application for Petra Residences Garden City, or you may not approve the resolution. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. There is no fiscal impact to the city. Developers aren't pursuing this particular grant. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Danielle?
So is the M I H only available the first time you apply, and once you start building, it's no longer available? Or will it, will it be available again when they begin to build out the whole parcel?
So the M I H program is a program that is funded by the state legislature. So at this point, it looks like there's some limited funding availability for, for both the M I H and the tax credit program. So it depends on future funding availability from this, from the state legislature. But theoretically, if there are funds available and they wanted to pursue another M I H application or tax credit application for the remainder of those buildings, they would be able to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, sorry, yeah, so the A and B buildings, they were just planning to do this first, so then they only want M I H for this first. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Yep. So they wanted just to start building out those first two, first two buildings.
Gotcha.
Yes. And those other buildings right along Jenny Barker, those are slated currently to be duplexes. So this is their current site plan that they've got with us and the current layout that they anticipate using for the entire site.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve the resolution supporting the M I H and K H I T C application for Petra Residences Garden City.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Twelve A is related to the public hearing. It needs to happen afterwards. So if it's all right, we'll move on to twelve B. I think Commissioner Landgraf's going to step down, and then I'm going to dial in counsel for the developer.
Hello?
Hi, Mark. This is Matt Allen. We're in open meeting in the City of Garden City and getting ready to start the item regarding the infrastructure M O U for Phase Two Star Bond.
Good, thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Garden City and Stone Creek Station Foundation regarding the anticipated infrastructure needs for the Star Bond Phase Two project. Danielle.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. The City and Stone Creek Station Foundation entered into a development agreement for Sports of the World Phase Two Star Bond Project on June 17th of 2025. That agreement generally references public infrastructure requirements associated with development of the site. The proposed M O U expands on the language to outline what public improvements, both on and off-site, are required to be made with the sports components, the baseball softball fields, and what improvements are to be made with the non-sports components, those future developable lots. While most of the off-site public infrastructure improvements will be the responsibility of the developer, there is a portion of Trail Connect to be along Jenny Barker Road from Mary Street to Russell Child Development Center that will be the responsibility of the city, as it is outside the requirements as outlined in the city's regulations. It would be cost-effective for the work to happen simultaneously, and the city will reimburse the developer for the actual costs associated with that small portion of the trail improvements that are required. There's also a number of future off-site transportation improvements that are anticipated to be needed as development continues to occur in the northeast portion of the community. While this project and this development does not warrant those improvements to be made at this time, the sports components are completed, this development will be a significant contributor to the need of those improvements in the future. As a result, the city has identified the approximate proportion of traffic associated with this development and charged the developer one-time fee for those improvements. Something similar will be done to the other developments that occur in the area, and when the traffic warrants the improvements, the city will be responsible for making said improvements. The M O U has been reviewed, reviewed by the city's bond council, Mary Carson, and the developer. The M O U is not binding, but rather outlines the intent of both parties. The city and developer will begin working on an amendment to the development agreement that will be presented to the city commission at a future date. With this, there are two alternatives before you. The first alternative is the governing body may approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Garden City and Stone Creek Station Foundation regarding public infrastructure for Sports of the World Phase Two, or you may not approve that M O U. Staff recommends approval of the M O U, and the fiscal note associated with this is that the city will be responsible for the costs associated with the trail, construction on the west side of Jenny Barker Road. The rest of the improvements will be the responsibility of the developer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Leo counsel for the developer online, and we also have representatives from the development team here in person as well.
Any questions for Danielle or any other representatives?
I think I have one. Just with the timeline for this infrastructure of the Sports of the World Phase Two, that, does that get established within the contract when that's developed, or is that discussed, was that discussed now?
Can you re, reframe that?
So when we got to put in this connection for the sidewalks and trail to get established, what's the timeline of that portion to get done?
Yes, so that portion, so the widening of Jenny Barker Road, which will include some of the trail improvements on the east side of Jenny Barker, and then ideally our portion from Mary Street to the daycare center, will all be done before they're able to get their certificate of occupancy for the fields. So all of that is tied to being able to open those fields. That future work is the stuff that will come with those future lots that get developed. And that's a little bit of a moving target. It depends what goes there and when and all of those things. So we left that pretty vague in the M O U intentionally, but that portion of the Jenny Barker Road widening will be done before they can get their certificate of occupancy.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Garden City and Stone Creek Station Foundation regarding the public infrastructure for Sports of the World Phase Two.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll wait for.
Mark, thank you. The item passed, five zero.
To come back.
Four zero.
Four zero.
Four zero.
Four zero.
Mr. Landgraf of the year.
Yeah.
Whoops.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
There you go. All right.
Twelve, 120, 12C. Mayor and Commissioners, you're asked to consider and approve an advanced traffic signal technology agreement between the Kansas Department of Transportation and the City of Garden City. Mike.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The Kansas Department of Transportation is adding advanced technology to the KDOT on traffic signals along US 83 bypass. The two signals are existing at US 83 and East Spruce Street and US 83 and Schulman Avenue. Advanced technology on the US 83 between liberal and Oakland, including traffic signal modifications at the two intersections I just mentioned, which includes new connected vehicle roadside units, C V onboard units, video imaging vehicle detectors, signal controller units, Cisco switches, signal service boxes, conduits, fiber, and camera cables, all of that in those two locations. And all of the equipment that's being installed and we pay for by KDOT. The two alternatives are the governing body may approve, the mayor to sign the advanced technology project agreement with Kansas Department of Transportation, or you may choose not to. Staff recommends that the governing body authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. And just as a note here, that KDOT will be paying for all of the equipment and installation costs and the maintenance of all of the new equipment. Under the fiscal note, there's no fiscal impact to the city, Garden City. We will still maintain the controller, we'll maintain the light bulbs and that kind of stuff that we do, but any of the new equipment will not be, we will not have to maintain or work on any of that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mike?
So, you know, I was right through in that, is there a purpose for all of this equipment? Or, I mean, and do they show that in the, it sounds like they're collecting a lot of data. Will this data be available to us as a city also so that we can make improvements?
Yes, I'm sure it would be available if we want to. Kind of, the way I explained it earlier to some staff was it's kind of like a SCADA system that we use on electric system, water, wastewater, monitors everything, and then they can make adjustments if they want to. Say there's a, you know, a tremendous amount of truck traffic or something that one day or that one hour, that system will automatically let those go, or vice versa, if it's on the side of the street, so.
Fascinating. That's great. Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the advanced technology project agreement with Kansas Department of Transportation.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Public Safety Advisory Board. Chief Pruitt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the P S A B of, I'm sorry, background. Public Safety Advisory Board has six vacant board positions representing the medical, religious, homemaker, and the Garden City High School and Garden City Community College student interest groups, as well as the county resident living outside of the corporate limits of Garden City. Reverend Doris Evans has submitted an application and is recommended by the P S A B to fill the religious position, which was vacated by Father Cameron Randall in July of 2025. Reverend Evans' term would expire in December of 2026. She is recommended for the appointment based on her expertise, involvement in the community, and experience. Alternatives before you, the governing body may approve the appointment of Reverend Doris Evans to fill the religious vacancy on the P S A B with her term expiring in December of 2026, or the governing body may deny the appointment and recommend that the P S A B continue to recruit board members. Recommendation from staff is that governing body appoint Reverend Doris Evans to fill the religious vacancy on P S A B with the, with her term expiring in December of 2026. And I am joined by Reverend Evans, if you have any questions for her.
Anyone have any questions for Chief?
No, she's, yeah, she's an excellent. I recommend, I ask that we approve the appointment of Reverend Evans to fill the religious vacancy on the P S A B with her term expiring in December 2026.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Can I ask one, please?
Yeah. Usually get a picture with our advisory board members for the, this board, so.
Ready? One, two, three.
All right. Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve up to four voting delegates for the League of Kansas Municipalities 2025 Annual Conference. City Clerk Kurtado.
Mayor and Commissioners, the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Business Meeting and Convention of Voting Delegates will be meeting on Saturday, October 11, 2025, during the League's annual conference in Oakdale Park. The League is not collecting registrations for those, for voting delegates and alternatives. And the governing body of each member city may elect city delegates from among the city officers to represent the city in the conduct and management of the affairs of the League of Kansas Municipalities. At this time, I believe I, we have two commissioners scheduled to attend, so the governing body may approve Mayor Cessna and Commissioner Nguyen as voting delegates for the 2025 Annual Business Meeting, or the governing body may not approve and suggest alternative names.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve Mayor Cessna and Vice Mayor Commissioner Nguyen as voting delegates for the 2025 Annual Business Meeting.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in, none being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. We can probably do the consent agenda right quick.
Item 13 is the consent agenda. If no items were to be pulled off and discussed separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items 13A through 13F.
Is there anyone from the public here to comment on any of the items for the nuisance items on the consent agenda? None being, then entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move that we approve consent agenda items A through items F.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
And I think by the time we open the public hearing, it'll be 10, or it'll be 1:30. Mayor, if you want to start on item 10A.
I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Item 10A, this is the public hearing on the matter of the governing body hearing questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate and the approval of the 2026 budget. Following the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And if approved, this would be resolution. And if approved, this would be resolution number three two zero nine dash 2025. I believe, that's correct, right?
Yes.
On this meeting?
That's correct.
Um, so, with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Jared Coleman.
At the July first, 2025, City Commission meeting, the governing body authorized the mayor to sign the indication of revenue neutral rate intent to exceed the calculated revenue neutral rate. The 2026 city budget was approved for publication at the August fifth, 2025 meeting with a 38.483 mil levy rate. The revenue neutral rate for 2025 is 35.928 mil levy rate. This resolution formally acknowledges that the city is exceeding the revenue neutral rate. The alternatives for today are that the governing body may approve the resolution as presented, and approval must be completed by a roll call vote, so see whether we'll take tally of each--
Present.
Or the governing body may not approve resolutions and lower the city's mil levy to equal the revenue neutral rate for this year. Staff recommendation is that the governing body approve the resolution as presented. Can I stand aside and fill the comment?
Anyone here for public comment on the budget? No? I will close the public hearing at this time, then. Entertain a motion on item ten A, resolution thirty two oh nine dash 2025. Again, this is, we have to make a single vote per commissioner due to state law.
I move we approve resolution number thirty two zero nine dash 2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in, all in favor?
So, I will go around in alphabetical order by last name. So, Commissioner Landgraf?
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Mayor Cesna?
Aye.
That passed. Thank you for all your hard work on the budget and-- everything that the staff does to make Garden City a great place. Going on to item number thirteen--
Twelve A, or--
Twelve A.
Twelve A, that's right.
Yep. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the authorization of the 2026 Budget Certificate, which summarizes the maximum levy of property tax for specific funds and the maximum expenditure for all funds of the city's budget. Jared.
The certificate for the 2026 budget was prepared using the notice of hearing for the 2026 budget expenditures. Prior to approving the budget certificate, the governing body approved the resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate. This allows the city to levy a property tax rate of 38.483 mils, which is the same rate as last year, that will generate approximately $12,274,793. The alternative for today is that the governing body may approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented. The governing body may approve and sign a certificate of budget that is different from what is presented. However, Kansas statutes prohibit the changing, the changes, resulting in raising the city's total mil levy from what was published in the notice of public hearing, or the governing body may not approve the certificate of a budget. Staff's recommendation is approving this and signing the certificate of budget as presented.
Any questions for Jared?
So, is this the one where each one of the commissioners needs to sign? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we approve and sign the certificate of budget as presented.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item?
I just have one quick question for Jared, just for clarification. On the ad valorem tax column, that counts in all the types of ad valorem tax that is generated, right, to property and sales tax?
This ad valorem tax is the property tax we generated.
Okay.
The personal property tax for the vehicles and stuff is broken out separately, so this isn't that number. This is just what's going to be added on the property tax.
Great, thank you.
And not, and not sales tax.
Yeah, not sales tax, okay.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion, or, already did that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared.
Now thirteen. Or, no, we did thirteen.
Yeah, I think we've concluded the business items for--
When you jump around.
Today's meetings, I think all mine are checked off anyways. I think we're ready for Commissioner reports.
Commissioner Unruh.
That was a quick, that was a whirlwind meeting there, so. Well, I just want to, I hope everyone had an incredible Labor Day. I know there were lots of people in the parks, rode my bike around the parks and was out, out walking my doodles, and so had a really fun time. And the weather last week was incredible, and so it was a really nice weekend. I did want to say thank you to all of the work that was put on, put together for the CIP process, which is coming up. And I'm really excited about the community improvement process, and I think that really making some, from some tweaks and also hearing from the community is really going to help us as commissioners and the community really move forward. This process is invaluable and it's really needed. This is a way that we, one of the ways that we get community input. So, if you're participating, thank you already, and I know it's going to be a great process. I also want to say thank you to the Kansas Food Bank. You know, being here, having them located in Garden City is not only a blessing, but they are really, it is touching so many different, different counties and different cities with, with what they're doing from here. But having a warehouse here allows them to do so many things in Western Kansas. And so, you know, it took a lot of work to get, to get them here, and now that they're here, and then now they're doing incredible work. And I just want to say thank you just for all the great work you're doing, and I know it's, it's really impacting Southwest Kansas. Finally, I want to say thank you on the budget. That was a process this year. I know we, we rerequited through, and I think that we've really come to some really-- being able to keep the budget at the same level, you know, really keep the, the budget flat and to keep it at a level that really makes sure that our city is, continues to be successful. So, I appreciate all of the different departments. I know that this is not a one and done type of thing for each department, and each department really looks at how they can really benefit not only our city, but also make sure that we are doing the best with the tax dollars that we're given. And I also just want to say thank you to Reverend Evans. She is an example of all the people. We have some incredible opportunities on our advisory groups. These advisory groups, without them, the city does not operate. And so, I'll tell you that we just want to say thank you to her stepping up. She's with a group of honorary people, so, I mean, she'll fit right in with there. But we wanted to say thank you, and then just thank you for all that Garden City is. You know, we have been a standout city for many, many years, and it's exciting to hear people talk so positively about us. Let's make sure that we also do the same.
Commissioner Landgraf.
I just want to start by saying it was a great pre-meeting we had this morning. It's great being able to get a bunch of information for the future of Garden City. Also, had the opportunity to volunteer at the Dream First Bank Charity Classic for the Epsom Tour. I just want to say it was wonderful seeing all of these pro golfers from all across the country, and then also just seeing all of the people from our community volunteering for that event as well. Also, I heard so many compliments about Buffalo Dunes from all the golfers. I've heard people, and it means a lot coming from these pro golfers because they've seen so many different golf courses, calling it world-class golf course and many other compliments. So, it's great being able to hear those compliments. Then also heard compliments about Garden City in general as well. Heard some golfers say they always look forward to coming to Garden City, so that was great being able to hear as well. And then finally, I just want to thank staff for all the time and effort they put on preparing the budget, and also just want to thank my fellow commissioners as well for all the time you guys put on there as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah. Last week, we, I joined in the Live Well 25th Anniversary Lunchtime. That was incredible, it's such a joy to hear the praise and compliments of how well Live Well has been operating for the benefit of our community and the resources they offer Southwest Kansas and even Kansas as a whole. And then last Thursday, I went and joined Mosaic for the Lunch and Learn, and it was very insightful to hear the many programs that Mosaic offers, especially their success with their Mosaic at Home program. And there were some people there that were from the Mosaic at Home program. And it was really to see, to hear the benefits of that. It was also first humbling, and also second, how grateful I am to kind of learn and be a part of these organizations. And then this September is National Suicide Prevention Month, so something that's true and dear to my heart is I would offer a poem, if you guys would sit with me on this one, a poem called "A House Called Tomorrow", that has just, has been a gift for me. It's by Alberto Rios, so buckle in. "A House Called Tomorrow." "You are not fifteen, or twelve, or seventeen. You are a hundred wild centuries. Bon bon fifteen, bringing with you in every breath and in every step, everyone who has come before you, all the youths that you have been, the mothers of your mother, the fathers of your father. If someone in your family tree was trouble, a hundred were not. The bad do not win, not finally, no matter how loud they are. We simply would not be here if that were so. You are made fundamentally from the good. With this knowledge, you never march alone. You are the breaking news of the century. You're the good who has come forward, through it all, even if so many days feel otherwise. But think, when you as a child learned to speak, it's not that you didn't know words. It's that from the centuries you knew so many, it's hard to choose the words that will be your own. From those centuries, we human beings bring with us the simple solutions and songs, the river bridges and star charts and song harmonies, all in service to a simple idea, that we can make a house called tomorrow. What we bring, finally, into the new day, every day, is ourselves, and that's all we need to start. That's everything we require to keep going. Look back only for as long as you must, then go forward into the history you will make. Be good, then better. Write books, cure disease, make us proud, make yourself proud. And those who came before you, when you hear thunder, hear it as their applause."
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz.
And to follow that. Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Now, first off, I just want to kind of mention about the, the tax levy sheet and things, but it is difficult to kind of get comments from the community and then kind of weigh in on our decision-making here. But just as a realization for those tax dollars that do come in and what they offer and what they pay for, we, we looked at everything, whether cutting police staff, cutting fire staff, getting rid of some of the amenities, closing down parks or whatnot, but you can think of some of the things that we do get that benefits the community of Garden City. And so, it was a tough decision to even think about cutting staff or, or cutting safety response times to your, to your front door. But this allows for that to happen in our community. And over the past decade, even going back more than a decade, we've kept that flat, we've kept it to where it doesn't increase. And so, that, that's our, that was our goal as a consensus up here as a group to kind of make that decision based off of that information. And so, it is tough to communicate that to the, to the community, but I do offer, if you want to know anything about it or want to hear more about it, just contact us. Come up here to the city and, and talk with anybody who wants to educate you on that. Because I, I believe, you know, collaboration, education, leadership, mentorship is important in our community, and I think it's got to get better. I did attend the Live Well Celebration, the 25th Annual. It's great, listening to Ed O'Malley, his, his opinion on, on Garden City's leadership, of, of what we're doing here in our community, and how can, how can he share that to other communities to kind of share that and get their communities up to speed with some of the decisions that we're doing. And a lot of the comments that he was asking for were kind of based off of leadership and collaboration. But in my, in my understanding of collaboration, it's not the same as when others hear it for the first time or for the fifth time or tenth time. Collaboration isn't just a part of conversation. It's a part of sharing ideas with one another, putting everything out on the table. What do you know, what I, what do I know? What do we know as a community to help solve an issue and battle it together to move forward? Collaboration needs to get better in our community, I do know that. We've been working through that with the county, and it's been working well with our leaderships involved in that collaboration. We've gotten stronger, but now I think we need to-- and kind of listening to Ed O'Malley, it's kind of pushed me up to that next level. Where do we go from here, right? Where, do we get to that, how do we get to that next level? Well, I think it starts with mentorship and leadership and, and education. We got to do our jobs going out into the community and educating them, educating ourselves and our professionals to do what we need to do to open, you know, an open discussion, open communication, collaboration, so that we can move forward together without any snags or without any issues involved. Part of collaboration is moving forward together. We, we may not think alike, we may not, we, we will have our differences, but let's talk about it, there's no, there's no room for, or there is room for error, but there's no room for shutting it down, shutting it down. So, I challenge each and every one of you, just like Ed O'Malley challenged us in that room, was think of ways that you can move together, or think of ways that you have been doing that you can do better. And so, I think those are my next goals to kind of get up to the next level, so I challenge everybody to do the same. So, thanks for Ed O'Malley on his conversation and to the Live Well Destiny. They've, they've come a long way for the last, past 25 years, and I think they're, they're going to get better. I believe that, and, and everybody can get better. Thanks for the comments from Mike, too, on the tally trail. I do appreciate those comments that come from the community to help better something that we use every day, that we're not, you know, we don't have eyes on, or some of the other community members don't have eyes on. So, thanks for those comments, as well as like, community parks, the, you know, the-- pre-meeting today, we, we had some, some eye openers from that information, too. So, we can only just get those things done, but with our budgets, it's kind of tough. So, money's, money's always the issue, but how do we, how do we get better, right? How do we get that done and accomplished? But thanks to the food bank for all that they do as well. They do an amazing job to kind of just go across all of those counties and, and help those that are hungry and, and get those individuals or communities food that they need. I had one other thing, but I can't remember what it was, but I think I'll just end on that. So, thank you, everybody.
Sounds good. Kind of echoing all of the other commissioners sentiments, sentiments. It was a good pre-meeting, a lot of good information presented. Just want to thank the commissioners for voting myself, as well as Vice Mayor Nguyen as voting delegates at the League meeting that's coming up in October. There is a lot of things happening with the League of Kansas Municipalities. I just attended last week their budget meeting, as well as a policy meeting. Been attending a policy meeting along with City Manager Allen on discussion of some policy issues that they can bring up to the state legislature. And then last week, I met with Senator Moran. He was visiting the community on, and visiting hospitals in the state and around the region, and had a good visit with him and thanked him for always coming to Garden City. It's always nice to have the senator visit the community and had a good conversation with him. Also, just want to thank all of our advisory committee members and our newest advisory committee member, Pastor Evans, and helping us. It's always, if you want to get involved, everybody always asks me, how do I get involved in Garden City? And one of my first responses is get on an advisory board, because that helps you to get involved with certain areas of our community. We have a lot of advisory boards, and we do have openings on those advisory boards. So, I always try to encourage people, if they want to get actively involved in our community, to do that. One last thing, I do want to congratulate, first public meeting, I want to congratulate Derek Ramos on his being named as the city administrator, or city administrator, county administrator. We're not getting rid of you yet, Matt. The county, county administrator, so congratulations, yeah. Congratulations on, on, on that, and we'll still have you in the community and be working with you in the future, but in a different capacity with the county. Last thing, I just want to say shop local and fly local, because that helps our community. Thank you. Anything else? Did you think of any of your last?
I remember it was a report on something, but I can't remember exactly what it was, but I, I'll get with staff on it.
Okay.
Teaser for the next--
There you go, yeah. Call this meeting adjourned, then. Just be mindful--